Counselor Peterson.
Here.
Counselor Geisler here.
Counselor Nelson.
Here.
Counselor Haushard.
Here.
Mayor Boucher.
Here. Announcements, do any counselors have announcements to make this evening?
None.
I have a couple. I would like to join the community in mourning the passing of our past fire chief, Clint Bu height, exceptional member of the community, born and raised in Hermantown, former high school football player, business owner in the city. He was a man of few words, but he let it back.
Yes.
I'd also like to thank his family for letting him serve our community in the way that they did. Public service like that takes a toll on the family. Also, as a general announcement relating to public input, we will have a few different sections of public input available tonight. The first will be a general public discussion about items not on the agenda. That is item eight on our agenda. We have a truth in taxation hearing tonight. We will have public input as part of that truth and taxation hearing and our budget approval process. And that is for that item only. Then each item on the agenda, an ordinance, if we're voting on it or a resolution, we'll have a separate time for public comment on that. So I just want to try and keep everybody in order on what we're commenting on. If it's on one of the agenda items, there will be a time available during that agenda item to comment. We will start now with the truth and taxation hearing, Mr. Mulder.
Well, I'd asked Kevin Arm, our director of finance and administration, to kind of do a brief presentation on the 2022 budget. I have often said that the adoption of the budget is the most important decision the city council makes every year because it sets the plan for 2022 or for the coming year and really sets the direction for us. So to me, this is one of the most important decisions that we'll make throughout the year. But so we'll have Kevin give a presentation on that first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So before you have two resolutions. The first one is 2021 dash 150. That is adopting the property tax levy. Now that can be done tonight or can be done in two weeks. It is required to be to given to St. Louis County by the end of the month. So that amount is $7,114,641. That is made up of several components. The general fund is the largest component that is increasing about seven percent. The debt levy is a smaller component. That's increasing about 24% due to the financial management plan and the 2021 mode improvements. Then we also have a Hermantown Economic Development Authority. That levy we had decreased last year because of COVID. We're putting it back to the level that we have planned in our financial management plan. So in total, the levy increase is about nine percent. The effective tax rate increases about seven percent. The second resolution, 2021 dash 151 essentially approves the budget, both the general fund budget, which is $6,732,986, and the overall city budget, which is 19,958,157. So almost 20 million. So that resolution will then, like John said, will plan out the budget for next year and approve the budget. And then we can move forward in appropriating the funds and then spending the funds in 2022. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions from council? I do have one, Kevin, on the resolution with the final city budget of $6,700,000 for the general fund and overall budget and 19,900,000. The difference in there, is that enterprise funds or is that, what makes up the difference?
So all the other funds save the capital project funds are in there. So there'll be, there'll be, the debt service funds are in there and then the enterprise funds. And then the general capital projects fund 401 for our general equipments is also in there. So basically, almost every other fund that's not the general fund is included in that 19.9 million dollars.
Thank you. Is our public comment period next, Mr. Mulder?
Yep.
Okay, now is a period for public comment on these two resolutions for the truth and taxation hearing. If anyone present in the council chambers wishes to comment on this, please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to either the levy or the budget for 2021, 2022? Is there anyone present in the chambers that wishes to speak to these two resolutions? 2021 dash 150 and 2021 dash 151? Is there anyone present at the online meeting that wishes to comment on these? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
As the mayor has requested, I'll ask everyone to unmute if they're interested in speaking to the, this particular hearing.
One last call for public input. Is anyone present in the council chambers or at the online meeting? Do you wish to comment on these resolutions? If so, please start with your name and address. With no public input in the truth and taxation hearing, we will move on to resolution 2021 dash 150, a resolution adopting the final 2021 property tax levy collectible in 2022 in the amount of $7,114,641. Do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Haushard. Do we have any last minute comments by council?
No, I think.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Um, just a thank you to the staff. I know we asked for you to go back and review and make sure that all of the decisions made for the budget were fiscally responsible. Also taking into consideration what we're facing currently from slight purchases so that we're planning accordingly. So just thank you to you and all the department heads for the work on this.
Thank you.
I would concur with what Counselor Peterson said. I would add that, you know, I appreciate staff coming forward with a comparison of our property taxes to comparable sister cities from Procter, Cloquet, Virginia, Hibbing and Duluth, and we're below all of those communities in property taxes. So I think, you know, the fact that we're able to maintain a quality of living in Hermantown and still have property taxes that are below our competing cities, I think is amazing. And I applaud the staff and our work as a city doing that.
Thank you. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Counselor Haushard.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution 2021 dash 151. Resolution adopting the final 2022 city general fund budget in the amount of $6,732,986 and overall budget of 19,958,157. Do we have a motion?
Motion to per.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Nelson. Do we have any comments from council at this time? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Counselor Haushard.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. We have no communications on the agenda and no presentations for the general meeting at this time. This is the time for general public discussion, a time that individuals can address the council about items not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. Is there anyone present in chambers that wishes to address the council about a general item not on the agenda? Is there anyone present that wishes to address the council about items not on the agenda? If so, step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone present at the online meeting that wishes to address the council at this time? If so, state your name and address. Anyone wishing to participate in public discussion on the online meeting? Please state your name and address for the record. With no public discussion, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Haushard, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Mulder, do we have a roll call?
Counselor Haushard.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. We have no motions on tonight's agenda. Ordinances, we have a first reading of ordinance 2021 dash 10, an ordinance amending Hermantown code of ordinances by amending section 850.5, particular speed limits designated. There will not be a vote on this tonight. It will be in two weeks at our next meeting. Mr. Mulder, could we get a short explanation of the change in this ordinance?
Sure, this is just looking at speed limits on Sunbee and the city portion of Swan Lake Road and resetting those speed limits.
Thank you. On to resolutions. Resolution 2021 dash 152. Resolution approving preliminary planned unit development for the Arbers at Maple Grove Development. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Haushard, Mr. Mulder. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, we'll have Mr. Johnson kind of present the staff report on this.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Before us this evening is a planned unit development, the preliminary approval for it for 103 unit four-story apartment building. It's located on 13 acres at the property of 507X Maple Grove Road. This property is basically across from City Hall and one lot down. This is property that currently has the city's trunk line sanitary sewer. These people drive by there, there's two gates with the trunk line sanitary running down a portion of this property. In addition, the applicant has a purchase agreement with the adjoining property owner to the east to purchase their rear three acres of their property. So all told, this is a 13 acre parcel that the applicant is looking at this evening. So what is before us? This is, as I mentioned, it's a 103 unit apartment building. Mr. Wickland, if we could possibly get one of the site plans up on the screen, if possible. So as I mentioned, this is 103 units. It's comprised of 71 bedroom units and 33 two-bedroom units. It's a 13 acre site. Once again, combination of the existing 10 acres as well as that three acres adjoining next to it. As I said as well, it's a four-story building. The maximum building height is 43 and a half feet. The average height is approximately 37 feet. And two points on this property, on this building per se, would you see the full 43.5 feet in height? One is at the entry point to the actual units, which is centered on the western facade of the building. It's approximately about 60 feet in area that, that you would see that, that 43 and a half feet. And that contains the lobby, offices, et cetera, associated with the apartments that way. The other point where you see the 43 and a half feet is on the north portion of the building. Once again, it's 60 feet wide right there. That is where the access is to the basically underground or at grade underground parking associated with the building. The drawing that just came up on here, that is on the right side of the screen. You can see that driveway coming around to that 60-foot portion right there. At that portion, it would be 43 and a half feet. On this, the bottom part of that page, that's the east side of the property. All those units, that's the living grade, the units at grade right there. So it's approximately 33 feet in height along that eastern border. And then on the south side, it's approximately 38 feet in height. So this is a flat roof structure. It's comprised of EPIS and different maintenance free type material associated with it. Mr. Wickland, if you could roll through a couple more photos, please. There are approximately 189 parking spaces associated on the site with 92 of those being basically within the structure itself and 97 surface parking spaces as well. The graphic that we just had a moment ago showed the building elevation. As I mentioned previously, that's the section right there. That's the entry we're looking at. That's the 43 and a half foot height maximum that you see right there. There's basically grade that comes up to the building, both on the north and south sides of that, which brings that structure down to about 38 and a half right there. This process, this, the city has looked at the PUD process and we had a looked at the, excuse me, the existing ordinance quite a bit over the past 2021 year here. The city had a moratorium starting in December of 20 on PUDs that were greater than four acres in size and, and greater than that many units as well. This is the first project that is coming under the new PUD ordinance that was approved earlier this summer. As part of that PUD new ordinance, what we did is we looked at a number of different things. Is one was the process associated with it. The other was the different design items associated with it. So how this meets the new ordinance is we require that there are separate applications for both the preliminary and final PUD submissions. Projects of, once again, greater than four units per acre and five units in size, excuse me, five acres in size will require to have separate processes. So that gives multiple opportunities for the public to have meetings like we have this evening. There'd be separate planning and zoning meetings for both preliminary and final PUD as well as city council meetings. One of the thing was the requirement of the preparation of a traffic memo. The applicant has engaged a traffic engineer who created this memo associated with it, projecting the number of cars associated with this site as well as the adjoining property, which is known as the pillars of Hermantown. That's the senior building that had been approved a little over a year ago by the city council. That information was sent on to St. Louis County, who is the controlling agency for both Maple Grove Road and LeBake Road. Vic Lund over at St. Louis County has looked at this extensively and he has submitted information back to us saying that the county would approve a full access at Maple Grove Road to handle both this proposed development before us as well as the, the future pillars project and then a future access on the LeBake Road, which would handle the pillars project. Once again, that would be something that'd be happening later on in 2022, as far as that pillar project goes. The, one of the other things as part of the PUD process was the recommendation that a neighborhood meeting be held. And the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on November 30th. We had approximately nine people in attendance of the 29 who were notified. In that case, there were people notified 1,000 feet away from the property, which is what the city notifies as well as part of the PUD process. The other portion associated with the PUD is, is how you look at the design. We have, the new ordinance included site-based design is a big portion of that. And how this application before us meets that is, as you can see on this graphic here and before us, this property is fairly secluded on this site. It's 1,000 feet away from LeBake Road. It's 500 feet from Maple Grove Road. It's over 400 feet to the nearest home. And that home happens to be the, the person who's selling the rear three acres of the property to the developer. And then the building setbacks on this property range anywhere from 60 feet to upwards of 500 feet associated with it. So as I mentioned, this building is set back in the, basically the northeast corner of the site. It's going to be located on that three acre portion that the developer applicant will be purchasing here. Another thing is, or another part of the PUD ordinance was amenity-based design associated with this as well. And what the developer applicant is proposing is there'll be an internal trail system, not only that'll serve this development, but will also ultimately have connection to the city's citywide trail system that'll be running to the north of this. There'll be an internal sidewalk that'll run down to Maple Grove that'll connect this project once again to that existing sidewalk along Maple Grove Road. There's a dog run associated with this, an outdoor pavilion, as well as community garden and open space for this. All these amenities are not only open to the residents of this proposed development, but also members to the public as well. So someone who does not live in this development does have the opportunity to come in this development, use these amenities and basically be part of this, this proposal that's before us this evening. So what we're looking at this evening is a preliminary PUD approval. If this does receive council approval this evening, the applicant would have up to one year's time to come in with a final PUD submission. And once again, at that point, there would be a planning and zoning meeting as well as coming before city council at that time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council at this time? Hearing none, we will open up the time for public discussion. I'd like to mention a few things before we get started on any public discussion. Routinely, we don't try, we try not to debate from the podium in a public discussion, but the council will try and answer questions that people have and refer them to appropriate city staff if we're able to do that this evening. Sometimes long and complicated answers need a little time to meet one-on-one with someone, but we'll try and facilitate everyone's questions and concerns this evening. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. We'll be taking input from the people in the council chambers first. And once that opportunity is exhausted, we will open up the opportunity to those present in the online meeting. When that is exhausted, we will make another opportunity for anyone to comment as kind of a last call. Is there anyone present in the council that wishes to comment on this proposed motion? If so, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Michael Copy, 5124 Beaver Creek Road. And I have four emails that were sent to me from other residents that wanted to attend tonight. Can I put, have these brought?
You can give those to Mr. Mulder and they'll be put in the public record.
So my, my first impression of this is, you know, we just had an apartment complex built on the corner of Uggstead and 53, which is also four stories. And when you talk to residents about that particular building, although that was a commercial zoning, their impression is it's a monstrosity. I mean, it's huge. And, and so we're looking at something similar in size being put in our three residential area. And so, I mean, I, that's, that's the feeling is it just does not fit because of its size. And I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that the drive-in garage that's proposed for this, which is one story, be lowered into the earth and that whole building lowered because as a four-story building, it also has two bump outs, which are for the elevators, which are nine plus feet above the four stories. So we're actually, to me, looking at five stories when you look at the height of the actual structure. And then there's probably going to be HVAC stuff put on, on the roof as well. Who knows what's going to all go up there, but. So to me, just the physical size of this structure in the R3 zoning does not fit. And I don't think it's unreasonable to ask the developer to have the drive-in parking area lowered into the earth. Birmingham up a building does not lower it. It may, it may give it that facade when you drive up to it, but from a distance, it's still sticking up in the air that high. So to me, the Birmingham, sure, it's a nice thing for the residents when they drive up, but for the residents that live in this area, it does not lower that building. And I don't think it fits this R3 area that we as residents in this area live. So I ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else in the chambers wishes to comment, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Jared Hanks, 4128 LeBake Road. Sorry, you gotta go slow. I'm not fast. But the, 4128 LeBake Road, sorry. I'm not the clerk, so I'm, that's fine.
You're acting tonight.
So you, what did you say the closest residential building was?
You had, we can ask Mr. Johnson, what was the closest residence to any part of the? You mentioned earlier in pre-agenda, 500 feet?
Yes, it's actually about 420 feet to the property that's located on Maple Grove Road. That's the property that's actually selling the three acres. And I believe it's a little over 500 feet to the property that's located off of LeBake.
Okay, well, my concern is I look directly to the west. And if this goes up, like I'm basically going to have to buy blackout drapes because I've got a couple of concerns, but one would be light pollution. Like, has that been addressed at all? Because usually when these types of developments go in, there's street lamps and stuff like that around the parking lot, which are sometimes 20, 30 feet tall. Is that going to address it all?
Well, I, I believe the types of modifications that you're speaking of are something that would be addressed during the final PUD process where the final plans are drawn up and submitted.
Okay. I mean, because regardless of what the closest residence is, the residence to the west, and there's, there would be three of them that I think would be mainly impacted. They have a direct view to that, to the PUD. And I believe the residence that Mr. over here was referring to is to the east, which is through wooded forest. And I think that might even be on the down slope of the hill there. So I would just like the council to consider the residence to the west with the light pollution and just the view that's being taken away from our backyard. I'd also like to say that, I mean, I'm from Hermantown, grew up here, lived here my whole life, except for some time in the military. And this does look like a nice development, it does. But when I think of Hermantown, I don't really think of big apartment buildings and developments like this. I think of single-family dwellings, something like, I mean, there's evidence of it all around Hermantown, like Silverleaf Street, up off of LeBake Road, things like that. If the developer proposed something like that, I bet there would be no objection to it whatsoever. Just something for the council to consider.
Mr. Hanks, your comments can be passed on through the process if this goes forward tonight. But I wondered, are you aware that this does not directly about your property, but is on the other side of an already approved development between your property and this?
The property that we're talking about right now?
The property, the development that's proposed tonight is east of an already approved development that does abut your property.
The already approved development on the corner of
Right.
Maple Grove and LeBake?
Yes.
That does not butt up to my property.
But it, it's closer than this is.
No, well, maybe physically, but my kitchen and bedroom window will look directly at the front of this building.
So we, we will add your comments if this goes forward to the process so that our zoning official will.
So what I'd just like to add then, for the record, for the secondary, if this moves on to the final PUD application, is to consider lighting and the neighbor behind me would be even more affected. So maybe something like a fence or something along that property line. I would just like that to be considered. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to comment on this matter tonight? If so, step forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Noldine. I live at 5104 Beaver Creek Road. I'm a new citizen to Hermantown, so this is all kind of new to me. I do have my parents that live here, they've lived here for quite a while now. They live off of Oak Ridge Drive. So Stepner Road, as you know, is a very busy road. One of the concerns that I have being on Beaver Creek, which abuts LeBake Road, it's quite a busy road. My concern is, does the city have any plans to control speed of traffic, sidewalk development along LeBake Road? I know Hermantown's a pretty quiet, peaceful community, but I think with these larger developments going in, traffic control congestion is going to be a real serious concern.
Okay. And in a short answer to your question, the LeBake Road and Maple Grove Road are both county roads. The city doesn't have direct control over the sidewalk, those roadways, but we do have input. The city doesn't have direct control over the sidewalk, those roadways, but we do have input with St. Louis County. And also, in our planning process, there is potential for planning of a city trail in that area that you're speaking of. But directly, we, we cannot build a sidewalk on the Leveque Road at this time. We can work with the county to try and get them to do it.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I think it's just something to be concerned about as Hermantown continues to grow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to comment this evening? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Patricia Keller, forty-nine ninety-three Maple Grove Road.
Sorry, I'm, I'm really slow. Forty?
Forty-nine ninety-three Maple Grove Road.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm a half mile east of the proposed project. And my concern is, is that I worry about the traffic. And I worry about our police and fire department being able to get out and take care of people. I was leaving my house the other day and it's kind of like a midday. It wasn't the traffic, a high-traffic time. But I waited for maybe about five minutes just to pull out of my driveway. And I looked to my, I looked to my right and the back, the traffic was backed up from Leveque Road to my side of Peace and Christ Church. That's a long ways to be backed up and to try to get in and out. So my concern is police and fire department being able to get out. I don't plan on having any more heart attacks or any of that, those kinds of things. You know, I like to be able to make sure that ambulance gets there if I need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present in chambers that wishes to comment on this proposed unit development? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Randy Lapage, forty-seventy-one Leveque Road. There are a number of issues that I have with this development as well as the other development that is already in the works. To start with, just to start with, we are looking at adding approximately five hundred people in about a quarter mile, quarter mile square in Hermantown. Hermantown is almost, it's thirty-four square miles and change with just over ten thousand people. You're looking at a much, much higher densely populated area. Even if you don't count the houses in there and you look at the full square mile, you're looking at about five hundred people in one square mile there. Right across from the fire department and police department. And have I mentioned that our fire department is a volunteer fire department that responds on over ten thousand calls a year? Ten thousand. That's an awful lot of calls that's coming out of, coming out of one location. They come out on Leveque, they come out on Maple Grove. This is going to be a lot of traffic coming in and out of there, and that is going to significantly impact the fire department there. Another thing is, when you've got that many people in that area looking at the sewer system that is set up. I am sure that when the sewers were built in that area, they were not intended for five hundred people living in a highly highly densely populated area. The the owner of this building who is proposing this has looked at rents of about thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred for a one-bedroom and two thousand for a two-bedroom. That is twenty-four thousand dollars a year for a two-bedroom apartment. I don't know what kind of income he thinks that the people who are going to be living in this substandard apartment building are going to be making, but I think that that is going to be very house poor people who are going to be there if they can even afford that rent. I would like to see, I would like to see him have leases for these properties that actually constitute this amount of rent. I would like to see him look at doing sewer upgrades to, and the other utilities to make sure that we're not going to have a, a major sewer disruption to the people who are already living here. And I would also like to see some medians to disallow left-hand turns because the traffic is just going to be horrific to get in and out of, to even get by that. I myself go through this intersection on a daily basis. I have seen traffic accidents that my husband on the fire department has responded to. We don't need more work for the volunteer fire department. It is already in jeopardy. I think we have limited time with them. They're having a hard time getting volunteers, and I can't blame the volunteers for that. So I think we really need to be thinking about the infrastructure that allows this. And I don't think we have that in this area. Perhaps this would be more suited to a commercial area, like the one up on Stepner. That would be a little bit more appropriate. But to have this on top of the pillars of Hermantown, two big projects back-to-back with about five hundred peoples packed into a quarter square mile. I don't think that that is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present in chambers that wishes to comment this evening? If so, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Anyone present in chambers that wishes to comment? Please step forward and state your name and address. If not, we will move along to the online meeting. Is there anyone present online that wishes to comment on tonight's resolution? If so, please state your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, this is Joe Wicklund again. I'm gonna unmute folks and give them a shot to raise their hand or speak. If they kind of talk over each other, I'll choose one at a time, but we'll make sure everyone gets a chance.
Thank you.
But everyone should be unmuted if someone would like to jump in or ask, I've asked them to be unmuted if anyone would like to jump in in the online setting.
Is there anyone present at the online meeting that wishes to comment on this resolution?
Yes.
If so, you start with your name and address.
Yes. My name is Matt Buteract and I live at forty-eighty-nine Leveque Road.
Could you spell your last name, sir?
B-U-T-O-R-A-C.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Multiple concerns. This is the second time we've been through this. First, the pillars with a in addition to what the pillars is going to be now, there were apartments or quad, quadplexes, they called them, and single-family houses based on that original plan. This we got that shrunk down and moved back off the highway, off the corner of the road. Now you're talking about adding more people than those houses and the quadplexes would have brought into the neighborhood. And it, the, the PUD process is appropriate for some things probably. But where do you draw the line? You know, eight PUDs right next to each other? That's not really keeping any neighborhood family feeling around those areas. So it's, it's, seems like they just move over a little bit and start another PUD. The traffic is a big, gonna be a big issue. That's a busy corner and it's gonna be tough with that. We're gonna have a lot of people in the neighborhood. And, you know, the senior living is one thing, you know, they're not gonna be out in the bulk of the neighborhood as much probably with assisted living and memory care units and all that. These are gonna be probably younger people. And there's gonna be a lot more foot traffic in the neighborhood, a lot more all sorts of stuff in the neighborhood. And we're just concerned that, especially the car traffic, but foot traffic, all sorts of traffic out there now. Noise is gonna go up. It's getting unbearable here already when you get high-speed vehicles taking off from Leveque Road or taking off from the intersection and loud mufflers and all sorts of things. You're gonna increase the traffic on Leveque Road. You're gonna crease, increase the traffic at the corner. It's gonna get loud.
I'm Mary Buteract.
Do you wish to comment, ma'am?
Oh, yes. I just wanted to point out, you know, in respect to what my husband has said. I also want to point out that these units, it's gonna be all rental. And with that, that is an unstable population, which really doesn't ground the true meaning of, of neighborhood. So I have a real big issue with that. And because I have lived in areas that have had such developments, unfortunately, I also saw with that increasing of a lot of rentals, you have the increase of unfortunately, some individuals that want to disregard the laws. And as a homeowner, I don't need any additional worries and concerns about my own safety. And as I age, the, I, I don't know how you'd ever do it, but for me to cross Leveque right now to my mailbox is quite a feat. I think I've only had one or two people and I've never slowed down to allow me to finish getting across. So one of these days, with this increased, this increased traffic, I'm just fearful that I'm gonna, I, I don't know what we're gonna have to do, but it's gonna probably force us out of our own home because of, of these issues. And I'll just reiterate that, yes, the prior development actually had a smaller potential population that was struck down last year. And now we have this developer, same, same people, but coming back and actually increasing the size and of population and size of building. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present at the online meeting that wishes to comment? Is there anyone else present in chambers or at the online meeting that wishes to comment? This will be a last call for public comment. If, if anyone wishes to make a public comment, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address or speak up online with your name and address.
Just ask one thing, is how many people here, as you've seen this proposal, are against it as you see it now? If you could raise your hand so that the people could see this.
Thank you, Mr. Copy. You're out of order. Please sit down. Anyone else present in chambers or online that wishes to comment? One last opportunity. With public comment exhausted, we will move on to a roll call vote. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mayor, could we have a chance to ask questions?
Yes, council has a chance to ask questions. I'm sorry.
For me, a point of clarification from Mr. Johnson, there was some reference to the, the new development on Uggstead and fifty-three, the Aerie project of being similar size. My recollection is that that is a underground parking with four stories above, correct?
Yes, that is correct. As you're looking at it from the intersection of Uggstead and fifty-three, that is one, the ground level is parking, four stories living above. That is a sixty-story or sixty-story, sixty-foot height building. What we're looking at here is a max height of forty-three and a half. And then one more point of clarification as well, since you brought that up, from speaking with Jim Richer, building official. The city does not consider basically rooftop units, elevator shafts, et cetera, into that overall height that way.
Okay. Yep. So the Aerie building is one full story less than this proposed development.
There is actually one story more than this about.
This is one story less. And then the other, for Mr. Mulder, clarification. There was reference to ten thousand fire department calls. I think we're closer to one thousand, right? One thousand fire calls in a year?
Well, now you got me stuck. Yes, it's one thousand.
I don't hear so well, but Mrs. Lapage referenced ten thousand a couple of times. So I just wanted that point clarified as well. And then lastly, I sit on the, as the liaison of Planning and Zoning Commission, and there was a an awful lot of work that was put in over the past twelve months in, in looking at this PUD ordinance. And I think the intent of the ordinance was met here by this development in the fact of the height, the consideration for height, the consideration for other amenities such as being provided here. So from a standpoint of our new PUD ordinance, I think it, this works quite well.
Thank you. Anything else? Any questions from council? I had one question for Mr. Johnson. The mention was made of the utility system not able to handle something like this. How many feet is this from our nearest new trunk line?
Well, from the the trunk line will actually runs, the existing trunk line runs through this site.
Right.
And as part of this development, they will be able to connect to that trunk line. I'm gonna look to Mr. Wolf, if you can tell me the size of that pipe, if you know that off the top of your head.
Mayor and council, the, the question about the the sanitary sewer is, that's part of the trunk line that this parcel, the trunk line runs through this parcel. That's a fifteen-inch line that we did as part of phase three, the trunk sewer. And that, that trunk sewer currently is somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent of the capacity that it was designed for. So we have a lot of capacity left in that, in that line. It's PVC, you know, and it gets tested on a on a maintenance frequency. So there's, there's no issues with that line today to connect these new buildings into.
So what you're saying is it wouldn't exhaust our present capacity?
No.
Thank you. Anything else from council?
Just the water line. There'd be a new water line into the site, correct?
Yes, that is correct, that it would be a developer-born cost as well as the roadway that would be coming into this as well. So those are both developer-born costs that are built and designed to city standards and will be turned over to the city for ownership at a future date.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Just maybe two more clarifications. I think it was kind of mentioned, but I think it's worth just kind of reiterating. Regarding the county, those two county roads, I know traffic was brought up by a lot of constituents. We, what was that process for communicating with the county and, and what was the response? And kind of what, what was that rationale and what was the outcome of that?
Yes, thank you. I had forwarded the traffic study that was prepared to Vic Lund, who is the St. Louis County Traffic Engineer. He looked at these numbers. He also looked at the existing capacity and the design standards associated with both Maple Grove Road as well as Leveque Road. And he had sent me information back and I'll actually just read the quote. St. Louis County does not have any plans in the next five-plus years to install a traffic signal or roundabout at the intersection of Maple Grove Road and Leveque Road. I do not expect this plan to change, even with the additional traffic generated by this proposed development. And as such, they are permitting both the, the full access that would serve this development as well as the future pillars. And then once the pillars is built, that access under Leveque Road as well.
Great. Thank you. And then regarding wa- you know, walking and sidewalks and, and traffic. We, there was mention of our plan for trails. I think it's just worth mentioning that that would go from, if I'm correct, the high school down to Maple Grove and across to the new trail at Boulder. Is that correct?
Eric, could you comment on the pathway of our, of our grand plan? Eric, could you comment on the pathway of our, of our grand plan for trails and what would encompass this area?
Sure, exactly. The greater scheme of it, it's, we're taking it from the intersection of Uggstead and fifty-three, ultimately down to Keene Creek Park, and then someday hook into Proctor and Duluth that way. In regards to this area, next year on Uggstead Road, we're gonna be constructing a section from Highway fifty-three to the Wellness Center. That'll be anywhere from a six and eight-foot wide accessible trail through there. Sometime in the next, in the future, a next phase will be running from that Wellness Center to this facility right here at City Hall. Whether we utilize the, the sanitary sewer corridor behind us or some existing power line corridors as well. It's envisioned that when that pathway, trail hits Leveque Road, it would then parallel Leveque Road down to City Hall where you could have a crossing at a stop sign across Leveque and then be able to hook into this sidewalk system that exists on Maple Grove Road. And then once again, then you can connect up to the proposed sidewalk associated with this and then hook back into the trail system, which will eventually get over to Stebner. So it's, it's a little bit of a roundabout, a big U, but it has some nice controlled access points and ability for people to traverse quite a bit of distance with very minimal road crossings.
Thank you.
Anything else? I guess now it's time for a roll call.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-three. Resolution approving special use permit for parking as a primary use at forty-nine eighteen Lightning Drive. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Geisler, second by Counsel Nelson. Mr. Mulder?
Eric could explain this as well. Why don't we just take five minutes?
Let's, let's take a short break. We're back in business. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
About the special use permit for forty-nine eighteen Lightning Drive.
Yes, thank you. This is a one-point-four acre site with an existing building. Gopher News had been the previous tenant of this property. The applicant, Maurice Food?
Bordage.
Bordage, thank you very much. He's the owner of NASCAR Towing. He has a purchase agreement for this property that consists of a thirty-nine-hundred-square-foot building as well as a fifty-three-hundred-square-foot parking lot. Now, what he proposes to do is to move his towing company, towing business, over to this property. He has one of two different fencing scenarios. One is he would fence the entirety of the property to create a secure facility for the entire site. Essentially have a gate located right off the drive entrance. The other one is a smaller scaled-down potential fencing, which would keep the impound area underneath the existing power lines that are out there today. He plans on using the existing building for a storage of his different vehicles associated with the towing business and potentially cleaning up some of the building for some office space as well. As you mentioned previously, this is a special use permit because parking is a primary use associated with it. This use would be similar to the city's impound lot that we have, that's approximately three lots to the west of that, that exists under the power line corridor as well.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the council?
I'm sorry, I will say it's nice to see businesses moving, you know, into the industrial park and some activity in there. I think that's a positive, so.
Any public input on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Anyone in chambers wish to comment on this? Is there anyone present at the online meeting that wishes to comment on Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-three? With no public comment, we'll have a roll call.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-four. Resolution approving a special use permit for a contractor shop and storage yard lawn and garden material supplies at fifty-three fifty and fifty-three ninety-six Miller Trunk Highway. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counsel Peterson, second by Counsel Haushardt. Is this one for Mr. Johnson also?
Yes.
Eric?
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is two properties you had mentioned on Miller Trunk Highway. This is a former do-bid site that was purchased by the applicant, Miller Creek Investments LLC, earlier this year. The applicant has since moved his landscape business, Miller Creek Lawn and Landscape, from his site on Swan Lake Road over to this property that we're talking about this evening. So this property consists of three existing buildings. The main one is an office showroom that the applicant has been doing some work on. And then he has two indoor material storage buildings in the rear of the site. He also has some outdoor storage to plant material and some landscape material, which is located in the rear portion of the property. In addition to this, Miller Creek is looking to expand its business model and add to it the rental of pod-type units that would be delivered to either a residence or a building contractor to be used on, on that particular site. These containers are onsite empty, and they come back empty. There's no storage of material on this site, per se, in these pods that way. In addition, right now, there's an existing fence that encompasses the majority of the property. The applicant has been doing quite a bit of work on the properties, recently paved the parking lot and then some building improvements associated with that as well, is landscaping. And as I previously mentioned, this is a relocation of the existing building over on Swan Lake Road.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-four? If so, please state your name and address for the record, either in chambers or online. Is there any public input on the resolution for a special use permit? Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-four. With no public input, I'd ask for a roll call.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-five. Resolution approving a grant agreement between the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources and the City of Hermantown, and authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver such a grant agreement on behalf of the City of Hermantown. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Peterson, second by Counsel Haushardt. Just for Mr. Johnson again?
Yep.
Did you structure that this way?
Actually, I purposely intentionally put them by department.
Thank you.
And I put Eric's first.
Mr. Johnson?
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. As you had mentioned, this is a DNR equipment grant. This is actually our second go-around on this application. And this year we were successful, which is, is really great and shows a lot of work from Bart Porter and the, the snowmobile club that way. So what has been approved by the DNR and then would need approval by, obviously, the council is a grant application for thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five thou, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. That requires a twenty-five percent match of ninety-two hundred and six dollars. That grant or that match is a responsibility of the snowmobile club, who will be bringing that money forward for it. The grant is paid out after the equipment has been purchased. So the, the snowmobile club will be carrying that money in the meantime. The city is the administrator of this grant. We're essentially the pass-through agent associated with this as the, the grant required that there was either governmental agency or a nonprofit that was the grant, that submitted the grant that way. There will also be a sub-grant agreement, which will fall after this, which specifies requirements and basically agreements between the city and the snowmobile club regarding ownership of the equipment, storage, maintenance, et cetera, that way.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
Well, we do have one member from the snowmobile club here, Bart. And I can just tell you that this has been a really good relationship with the club and the city. They, and Bart himself has attended our park board meetings, really taking an interest in understanding the direction as a city that we're taking with the investment in our trails and the importance of that. And they are there to try to enhance even what we have and to better the community and give it a wonderful offering beyond, above and beyond what is even expected. So the partnership is huge. We operate with a very lean staff for them to be able to come in and assist and provide those trails in the winter time. And, and actually, they work on them all year round. Is really, really, I, I mean, I feel very lucky to have them as part of our community. And so I'm, I'm just happy. I feel like we've been talking about this, I said, for quite a while, so to be at this point. So thank you, Bart, to you and to your entire group for all that you do and for your involvement. We appreciate it.
Anything else from council? Is there any public input on this matter? If anyone is present either in chambers or online that would like to comment, please identify yourself with name and address. Any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-five? Roll call, please.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-six. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a sub-grant agreement with Hermantown Knight Riders Snowmobile Club. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Nelson, second by Counsel Peterson. Mr. Johnson?
Great, thank you. As I previously mentioned, this is a sub-grant between the city and the club. Outlines the, once again, equipment storage, the maintenance of it, the responsibility of the repairs for the club, as well as their responsibilities to groom fifty-four miles of trails, including the, the trails within Keene Creek Park as well.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
No.
Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-six? Roll call, please.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-seven. Resolution approving final compensating change order and final pay request for road improvement district number five thirty-seven. Leveque Junction Road to Yuland Brothers Incorporated in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars and seventy-nine cents. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Geisler, second by Counsel Nelson. Mr. Mulder, do we want Mr. Bolf to answer this one?
Well, I'll, I'll just quick answer this. This is the final payment and compensated change order for Leveque Junction. Again, I think this is a project that the council can be proud of. I think it really improved it. We've had a lot of fine compliments from the neighbors on this issue as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-eight? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on the resolution approving the final compensating change order and pay request for the Leveque Junction Road? If so, state your name and address for the record. Roll call, please.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-eight. Resolution approving final plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for reconditioning of Highway fifty-three Water Tower Improvement District number three eighteen resolution.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Peterson, second by Counsel Haushardt. Mr. Mulder?
So these are the plans and specs for the Highway fifty-three water tower. It'll look very similar to the Hawk Circle in terms of the script and the, and the coloring of it, and then recondition both the inside and outside.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I just have one. Is there towers or antennas on that one, like the other antenna?
There is not. Which is interesting because it is the same elevation, just not the same height.
Okay, thank you.
Any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-eight? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, state your name and address for the record. Roll call, please.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-nine. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver agreement with Troy's Towing Doing Business as USA Towing and Recovery for wrecker service and vehicle storage for the City of Hermantown Police Department.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Nelson, second by Counsel Peterson. Is the chief gonna address this one?
And now it's the chief's turn. He gets the next four.
Chief Crace.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We advertised for quotations or proposals for towing services for the next two years. We received two proposals, of which Troy's Towing was the lowest in the, in all the categories that we use the most frequently. And we've got about over ten years of experience with Troy's USA Towing and had good luck with them. So my recommendation is to continue that contract for the next two years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one fifty-nine? Either in chambers or online. If so, state your name and address for the record. Public input on the resolution for towing contract for the police department for the next two years? Roll call, please.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty. Resolution approving the twenty-twenty-two towards zero death enforcement grant agreement. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Peterson, second by Counsel Nelson. Mr. Mulder, is this one for the chief again?
Sure.
Chief Crace.
Again, Mr. Mayor, thank you. For many, many years, probably twenty years, we've had a, an agreement with the state of Minnesota, most recently in conjunction with the Duluth Police Department and all of the law enforcement agencies in southern St. Louis County to provide extra patrols for the toward-zero-death enforcement program. That includes speed enforcement, DWI enforcement, distracted driving, seatbelts, and et cetera. There is also some education that goes on with that program as well and outreach. This particularly is to, to pay for overtime and fringe benefits associated with the overtime enforcement shifts.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty dash one sixty? Roll call, please.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty-one. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver the State of Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement with the City of Hermantown on behalf of its city attorney and police department. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Haushardt, second by Counsel Geisler. Mr. Mulder? Chief of Police?
He's up again. Chief?
Thank you. This agreement is for sharing of data with the state of Minnesota and the VCA. And again, it, it just links our computer systems. We've had these agreements for many, many years. Without them, we would not have connectivity and wouldn't be able to report crime data.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty-one? Is there any public input on two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty-one? If so, state your name and address for the record. Roll call, please.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty-two. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver the court data services subscriber agreement with the City of Hermantown on behalf of its police department. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Peterson, second by Counsel Nelson. Chief?
This is basically the same agreement as the one we just spoke about. However, it is, creates and supports connectivity with the court system.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty-two? Roll call, please.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty-three. Resolution approving tentative agreement and authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver agreements with Ask Me Local sixty-six for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Geisler, second by Counsel Nelson, Mr. Mulder?
So this is the second of the labor agreements that were presented to you for the period of twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. This is very similar to the Public Works Agreement that you approved two weeks ago. And so we're recommending approval.
Any comments from council? As one of the people working towards this agreement, representing the city, I recommend approval of it.
I agree.
Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty-three? If there's any public input on the resolution approving the tentative agreement with, between the City of Hermantown and Ask Me Local sixty-six, please state your name and address for the record. Roll call, please.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty-four. Resolution of the City of Hermantown accepting supplemental distribution of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Peterson, second by Counsel Haushardt. Mr. Mulder?
Earlier this year, we received money in part of the American Rescue Plan fund. And now we have a supplemental appropriation for that or amount of about sixteen thousand dollars. We expect another one similar to this about a year from now. And so we're just asking the council to accept that money.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty-four? Roll call, please.
Counsel Peterson?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Nelson?
Aye.
Counsel Haushardt?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. And last, we have a motion for recess. Do we have? Motion by Counsel Geisler, second by Counsel Haushardt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same thing. Anybody want to?
Yeah, thank you, sir.